Welcome to the July 8, 2019 Newton Town Council meeting. If we can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, if you could take the roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Schlafer?
Mayor LaFois.
Here. And Councilman Schlafer emailed ahead today to be excused, for the record. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 4, 2019. Everyone received the minutes from the June 24, 2019, regular meeting in their council packets. Do we have any additional changes, amendments, deletions, corrections?
Well done.
Other than those submitted? Okay, can I have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 24, 2019, regular meeting.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes. All right, at this point in the meeting, the town council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard. Speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
I was wondering, hoping that there is an update on the Newton pool. Last time, we were given an update with six weeks ago, and the borings were supposed to be set to May 31. I understand that part of the study is done, and suburban engineers were just waiting for that part to be finished, to come up with their final report. So I'm wondering when that will be given to you, if you have it, if you've discussed it. I know that last meeting you were talking about the Babe Ruth report, so the pool ought to be finished soon, correct?
I can let Tom elaborate on that, but I might as well address that now. Our timeline hasn't changed. The council expects to have the recommendations and the report from the engineers at the September meeting. We did talk about the Babe Ruth Field and its issues last meeting, but nothing on the pool at this point. We have not received any reports.
Okay. So this study's not going to be finished until September 9?
The engineers are coming to present to the council their findings at the September meeting. I think we've had that scheduled now for a little while.
Okay, will there be any open discussion about the pool, like you discussed the Babe Ruth Pool at the last meeting?
It'll be, it'll be an open presentation, absolutely.
Was there a presentation about the Babe Ruth Field?
There was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
That's all right.
I was in Florida with my grieving mother. Also, thank you very much for facilitating the transportation to the Hackettstown Pool. I have learned, though, I know it just started last Monday, and it sounds as though it might be off to a slow start, because a lot of people don't know about it. So I'm hoping that you could help facilitate getting the word out to the town, not just electronically, because a lot of people don't have Internet. I've dropped off flyers and things to a lot of our residents to educate them on the pool, you know, the access to the Hackettstown Pool. So I'm just asking for your help for that, because it is going to be a hot summer. All right, thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Okay.
Teresa Marquina, 7 Liberty. I just, I think maybe what would help is, I know that there's programs going on in the schools, so maybe sending out, I don't know if you guys sent out flyers for the Hackettstown Pool, you know, busing to the, like, through the schools, but that may be a good route for some of those kids that are there. So, just an idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And I think what most of our attendance here for tonight, we have over 70 people tonight in the audience, and it's very wonderful, really, to see our police department here. I think most of you know, this council likes to see our law enforcement in the council chambers and an opportunity to say hello and thank you. Before we move to our swearing-in ceremony, I have this for my public comments later, but I have a feeling that many of you won't be here for that portion. So I do just want to recognize Chief Michael Richards, the Newton Police Department, the Center for Prevention and Counseling, for the Law Enforcement Leadership Award from PRI, the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative, for your leadership and the police departments embracing, really, of the CLEAR program and leading that charge in Sussex County. I know the, our entire department has worked on that initiative, and Chief Richards went to Massachusetts to accept that reward, but humbly, and I think accurately reflected in his comments, that he was accepting that award on behalf of all of you that are in the field every day, not looking at the opioid issue as necessarily an enforcement issue, but an opportunity to lend a hand to those that are suffering from addiction and using the resources of the Newton Police Department and the history that so many of you have in this community, living locally, living in town, knowing our residents so well, and the support that you all provide to those that are suffering from addiction, and not only saving lives, but looking to help those that need the help. And the Newton Police Department, leading the way in the county in that initiative, and really encouraging so many other departments to be part of the CLEAR initiative and be a part of the solution. So Chief Richards, thank you very much for representing Newton so well, and thank you for your continued leadership on this initiative. I know that our friends over at the Center for Prevention and Counseling are incredibly proud of this initiative, and I think, as a person that works in nonprofit as well, I know that this program has really shed some light and expanded awareness for the Center for Prevention and Counseling. It has opened doors for funding needs that they've had, and certainly collaborations in the county and outside of the county. So, thank you, Chief Richards, thank you to the entire department, all the personnel that work on this initiative, on behalf of the thousands of lives that you have helped and saved. We really appreciate you. So Chief Richards, might want to make him wait a little bit longer? Did you have something to say before we actually do our ceremony?
So, many are here tonight for Tom Tostie. He's a lifelong resident of Stillwater Township. Just a little bit about Tom. We finally got him to leave Stillwater, so you're into the naked city, what they call it, right? Into Newton.
Swarmswood proper.
Swarmswood proper, not really Stillwater, okay. He's a graduate of Kinnititty Regional High School in 1989, and then he went to Sussex County Community College and transferred to East Stroudsburg, where he received a Bachelor of Science degree in sociology and criminal justice. After college, he was hired by the Sussex County Juvenile Detention Center, where he was employed for six months, before being hired by the Stillwater Police in 1997. He worked there until February 2003, when he transferred to Newton PD. Once here, he performed very well, and he earned assignment to the Detective Bureau. That was in 2005. While a detective, Tom completed training to be a school resource officer and a DARE officer. For the last 14 years, Officer Tostie has been the department's DARE, and then later the lead officer, law enforcement against drugs, and has taught this to the many students who have passed through the 5th grade at either the Halsted or the Miriam Avenue School. His work in the schools has helped him to form and to maintain many valuable relationships for the police department, and I think evidence of that is the fact that we have Mr. Jeff Waldron, the principal, Sam Castro, the vice principal, and actually our former principal, Jim Tasker, is here tonight in front of the High School. So thank you for being here tonight. Thank you. Officer Tostie is also the department's community relations/crime prevention officer. He has been invaluable in all of our community engagement activities, and I know that he honestly believes the connections we make in our community helps us to be more effective in our law enforcement duties. In addition to our schools, he has worked closely with such agencies as the Center for Prevention and Counseling. He even went up there off-duty and painted for them, right? When they, when they had a little expansion, was it the Clear Room you painted for?
Yes.
He's worked also with Project Self-Sufficiency and DIFIS. While serving as a detective, Tom Tostie was always reliable and genuinely caring, and saw every case through to the end, leaving no stone left unturned. He was the lead detective in numerous sexual assault investigations, and worked all kinds of major crimes, from kidnapping to homicide and aggravated assaults. Throughout it all, one of Tom's most outstanding qualities, though, is his often self-deprecating sense of humor. Everybody knows what I'm talking about. I've many times found that a quick stop back in the Detective Bureau, when Tom was working, would serve as a good little pick-me-up in the late afternoon, as you'd always either leave laughing or just maybe smiling and shaking your head. And humor is important in this line of work. For the last couple of months, he's been tasked with being a coach to our newest patrol officer, Steve Nidel, who's also here tonight, someplace, there he is, and who is, he's undergoing field training currently. It is really for all these reasons that I recommend, without hesitation, that Tom Tostie's promotion, for Tom Tostie to be promoted to sergeant, and I look forward to his continued leadership and supervision of a patrol squad for many years to come. Tom?
I, Thomas M. Tostie.
I, Thomas M. Tostie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
First off, I want to thank my family for being here. Chief?
Thank you.
And all the members of the police department for the last, I don't know, 18 years here. Worked with probably some of the best police officers in this county. We've worked a lot with other agencies, and I can say that our, our police department's probably top-notch, from lieutenant down to down. I want to also thank Sergeant Frank Philharmon, he hired, he actually trained me when I went to Detective Bureau. So, as a school resource officer as well, so thank you. Mr. Waldron and Sam Castro, thank you for being here. And, that's it. We, 14 years, 15 years, being up there, quite a long time up the high school, so, really good. So, I just want to thank everyone. Thank you so much for the council. Thank you for recommending me, and...
So just to be clear, so it's top-notch from the lieutenants down?
That sense of humor, Chief.
I just wanted to make sure you were listening.
I think those are outside. So, thank you, everyone, for coming.
So we're going to pause here for a moment for the paper and family members to take pictures up in the front, so Sergeant Tostie. The, perhaps the other reason why so many people are in attendance tonight, thank you to our two newspapers of record, for promoting the fact that we're having this presentation tonight. So Tom, if you want to lead us in?
Yeah, we asked Representative from the Sussex County Health Department, Kayla Shelley, to come and give a presentation on tick safety.
Hi, everybody.
Kayla, come on up.
My name's Kayla, I'm a public health nurse with Sussex County Department of Health.
Yep, so we'll have you speak into the microphone, just so it's picked up.
Yeah, I think it's a little bit better.
For the recording.
All right. So this is a little bit about tick-borne diseases. So what are tick-borne diseases? They're illnesses that can be spread to humans by the bite of an infected tick. The most common tick-borne diseases in New Jersey are Lyme disease, ehrlichiosis, anaplasmosis, Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, and babesiosis. So it is possible to be infected with more than one tick-borne disease at the same time. How do tick-borne diseases spread? Ticks become infected when feeding on small infected mammals, and an infected tick can then infect a person through a tick bite. How do ticks find their hosts? By detecting breath, body odors, body heat, moisture, and vibrations. Contrary to popular belief, ticks do not fly, jump, or fall from trees. Many species will hold onto grass with their first set of legs outstretched, waiting to grab onto a host when they brush by. You can see an example of that in the picture right there. It's called questing. Some attach quickly to the skin, while others wander, looking for an area where skin is thinner to attach, such as behind your ear, inside your belly button. So they cannot be easily brushed off due to the barb hooks on their mouth parts. So they're not like mosquitoes, they don't come and bite you and leave, they stay on you. So their saliva does contain cement-like substance that keeps them firmly attached, numbing properties, so the host can't feel attachment, and anticoagulants to keep a host's blood flowing. So who gets tick-borne diseases? People who spend a lot of time outdoors, especially from April to September, have a greater risk of becoming infected. The life cycle of a tick, so there's four life stages. You can see an example of that in the picture, the egg, the six-legged larva, the eight-legged nymph, and the adult. And they must eat blood at every stage to survive. They can take up to three years to complete their full life cycle. Survival and development are dependent on the environment and the availability of hosts. And death for a tick usually comes from starvation, dehydration, egg-laying, old age, rather than from predation. So these are the three most common disease-causing ticks in New Jersey, the black-legged deer tick, American dog tick, and the lone star tick. I wanted to talk a little bit about each. So the deer tick, the diseases they spread are Lyme disease, anaplasmosis, babesiosis, Powassen disease. What bites? The nymph and the adult female. You can see a picture of each. The adult female's all the way to the right, nymph's to the left, and the bottom. When? When temperatures are above freezing, and greatest risk is spring through fall. Adult females have a reddish-brown, tier-shaped body with a dark brown hood. And the size? The nymphs are the size of a poppy seed, and adult females are the size of a sesame seed. Is there anywhere to back it out, so you can see the whole PowerPoint picture?
Um, not sure.
Yeah. Just so we can stay on track here.
On the other TVs, I think, oh, on the back TV, it's the phone.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay. So, the American dog tick, the diseases they spread are Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever and tularemia, and white bites, adult females, when April through August. And adult females have a dark brown body with whitish markings on the hood. And the size? The nymphs are also the size of a poppy seed, and the unfed adults are a little bit bigger, the size of a watermelon seed. Next is a lone star tick. What diseases they transmit are ehrlichiosis and tularemia. What bites? Are the nymphs, again, and the adult females, again, when April through September in the Northeast. And the coloring? The adult females have a brown body with a white spot on the hood. And the size? Again, the nymphs are the size of a poppy seed, and the adult females are the size of a sesame seed. So some of you guys might have heard about the new tick in town. This is the Asian Longhorn tick. So the first finding was in the United States, it was in New Jersey in 2017. It's actually found on a sheep in Hunterdon County. Since then, it's been found on pets, livestock, wildlife, and people. And in other countries, bites from these ticks have made people and animals seriously ill. Research is still ongoing with this. So I wanted to touch on the Powassen virus, because of recent happenings in Sussex County. So Powassen virus is a tick-borne illness transmitted mainly by the bite of an infected black-legged tick, the deer tick, which is the first one we talked about. Symptoms include fever, headache, vomiting, weakness, and confusion. Some people don't exhibit any symptoms at all. So it's not new to New Jersey or Sussex County. There's been six confirmed cases in Sussex County since 2015. There's been two confirmed cases in Sussex County this year, one of which did pass. There is a greater risk for developing complications from the Powassen virus if other medical conditions exist, and the best protection against this virus is to follow the recommended preventative measures against tick bites, which we're going to talk about in a minute here. So this chart I just wanted to put up here, just to show you that ticks can be hard to identify once they're engorged. They can enlarge its size 20 to 50-fold, or 200 times its weight, once they're fed. It is important to identify what type of tick bit you, because that could tell the doctor what diseases you could possibly get, and what you need to be treated for. So what are the symptoms of tick-borne diseases? So you can see up there the classic bullseye rash. You could also have tiredness, fever, chills, headaches, stiff necks, muscle aches, joint pains, a big one, dizziness, nausea, paralysis. When do symptoms occur? Initial symptoms usually show up within two to four weeks of being bitten. You can see some symptoms start to show at different times with each disease. The general rule of thumb is within 30 days the symptoms would show up. And how can they be diagnosed? So, tick-borne diseases are very hard to diagnose. They're often based on clinical signs and symptoms, a history of a tick bite or tick exposure, and in Sussex County, we're always exposed. And you could also have lavatory findings that could draw up blood. So why diagnosis is important? It's to prevent potential complications, which include a brain infection, a heart infection, heart valve infection, all of which are serious and potentially life-threatening. So what's the treatment? Most tick-borne diseases are caused by bacteria and can be treated with antibiotics. Now, as per the CDC, a tick typically needs to be attached to you for 36 to 48 hours before it can transmit to the disease, but some studies have shown that the disease can be transmitted within less time, certain types of diseases. They say early treatment can be effective, and for most people, the prognosis is good and symptoms go away after treatment. So how to prevent tick-borne diseases? Know where the ticks are. Ticks live in or near wooded or grassy areas. You want to keep your yard clean, you want to mow lawns, clear brush, remove leaf litter, and apply insecticides. Use EPA-registered repellent with DEET on the skin and permethrin on clothing and boots. Cover up, wear long sleeves and pants tucked into socks to prevent ticks from getting under clothes, and shower. Showering can help find and wash unattached ticks. So they say if you'd entered a tick-prone area, you want to do a survey upon leaving, before getting back into vehicles, once back at the workstation, and when getting home. So the best protection, again, you can achieve is by using a repellent that contains permethrin on your clothes, and one that contains DEET for your skin. So this is a little bit about the insecticides. So permethrin, they say for each of them, you want to follow the label on the product. So you want to spray this while your clothes are off your body, and let the clothes dry completely before wearing them. They say you don't want a quick spritz, but also don't want to be drenching your clothes. You want to spray enough for your clothes to become damp, and you can wear them and re-treat them about after six washings. Now, DEET, it comes in varying concentrations, ranging from 4% to 100%. Concentrations of 30% are the best, they say, and generally provide protection for up to eight hours. So these, you want to apply repellents to only exposed skin or clothing, and when applying to your face, you want to spray it on your hands first, and then rub onto your face. And at the end of that, you want to wash the treated area with soap and water. So this is just a little bit about checking for ticks. So they do hide, so they could be under the arms, in and around the ears, inside the belly button, in the back of the knees, in and around the hair, between the legs, around the waist, on the scalp. So this is about, a little bit about removing a tick. So you want to use fine-tipped tweezers to grasp for the tick as close to the skin surface as possible. You want to pull upward with steady, even pressure. Do not twist or jerk the tick, because this could cause the mouth parts to break off and remain in the skin. If this does happen, you want to try to remove the mouth parts with tweezers, but if you're unable to do so, you want to just leave them there, because sometimes digging in the skin can cause more harm than good. And after removing a tick, you want to thoroughly clean the bite area with your, and your hands with soap and water. If you don't have tweezers, it's suggested to put gloves on or cover your hands with tissue paper, and then use your fingers. You don't want to handle the tick with bare hands, because infectious agents may enter through mucous membranes or breaks in the skin. And you want to grab the tick as close to its mouth as you possible. Do not grab the tick around its bloated belly, because incorrect removal can result in mouth parts being left behind, which we talked about before, it can result in localized infection, compression of the tick's body, which may cause infectious fluids to be squeezed back into the host. Puncture of the tick's body may spill infectious fluids onto the host or onto the person removing the tick. An injury or irritation to the tick may result in it regurgitating infectious fluids into the host. So this is looking at the numbers, so this is the most recent from the CDC. So you can see for every single disease, the numbers have increased. And why is this happening? Why are the rising numbers? So the rising incidence of tick-borne diseases is due to a number of factors: increased tick abundance, overabundant deer population, increased recognition of the disease, establishment of more residents in wooded areas, greater potential for contact with ticks, and change in climate patterns. And for future effort, we want effective biological control and host reduction techniques. We need improved identification and surveillance of ticks, emphasis on community education, continued education for healthcare professionals, and investigation of other avenues of prevention, such as vaccines. So in conclusion, tick-borne diseases are spread by the bites of infected ticks. Most infections occur in the late spring, in the spring and summer months, and you want to prevent disease by wearing repellent, checking for ticks daily, and calling your doctor if you present with any concerning symptoms. For more information, you can go to the New Jersey Department of Health or the CDC. That's it. Thank you.
Kayla, thank you very much for your presentation. Because we have many members of the public here, I'll go ahead and reopen the meeting to the public for anyone that might have any questions for Kayla. Sure, come on up.
A question. The question is, I see on that presentation Powassen's mentioned, but I don't see a varnella mentioned.
Yeah, this is the most recent that I could find, and I thought that would be what I should talk about, because of the recent incidents that happened in Sussex County.
Oh, just to add to what you say, we did a tick drag up in Pike County, in Milford itself, and we did one in Dingmans. And through that tick drag, we found out that out of the 35 ticks or so in Milford, 18 of them were positive for varnella. None one was Borrelia.
Yeah.
Okay? And then when we went to Dingmans, there was no varnella, and it was all Borrelia. You know, I mean, plus the other ones. So I think, and being a person that had varnella two, three times, it's something that... So I think, and being a person that had Bartonella two, three times, it's something that...
Yeah, there's no doubt we're a little bit behind the times with the tick prevention. You know, we have a lot of stuff for the mosquitoes, right? We have a program for mosquitoes, the spraying and the testing and things like that. And, you know, it's not just on a county level, it's on a state level. It's even above that.
Those brochures, I have like five hundred at home, and they're good brochures in the state. I just wanted maybe think about in the future mentioning Bartonella.
Yeah, there's a lot to talk about. This is a big topic.
Yes. If a tick comes in your house through your door and goes on your bed, you never have to see that. You never really have to see the grass or outside.
Yeah, it's true.
And so, and then, like we talked about before, you know us, so we advocate for tick testing. We really believe tick testing is the way to go, so. But that's the one that Bartonella is really coming up in the area. It wasn't before, but it's really being, I don't want to say popular, but it's, a lot of people want it.
Like I said, you know, there's a lot to be talked about with this topic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, there's a lot to be done with it.
Right, and that's what we do to educate, you do to educate on tick-borne diseases.
The more people that know.
Right, if we all do it, it's really excellent.
And sir, can you just state your name and who you're with? Yeah.
My name is Marty Faison, and I'm part of the Tick Squad.
Okay.
Okay?
Just so everybody knows, yep.
Kayla, John Selma, part of the Tick Squad. Could you go over the slide that has the numbers on it? Is it possible for you to back that up?
So that's from the CDC. That's from the 2016, 2017.
So according to that, it says there were forty-two thousand in 2017 of Lyme disease cases in Sussex County, or is that New Jersey?
That's New Jersey.
New Jersey, okay. Because I thought it was Sussex County, and those numbers would be... Okay, all right.
Those numbers would be staggering.
Hi Kayla, thank you for doing this, appreciate that. I'm also from the Tick Squad. Had the pleasure of meeting her at a YMCA, fear that a lot attended for the children specifically. And I liked your presentation. I do have, make one comment though. In regards to getting bit, you don't always have to get it with a rash or a bullseye, correct?
Absolutely.
So maybe if you just tell people that, because they think, oh, I can get a rash.
No, that's not true. That's not true at all. You know, some people don't exhibit symptoms. That's why, you say if you do get bit by a tick, you should call your doctor right away. You know, because we were talking about before, you know, you don't exhibit symptoms right away. Some people don't even get the rash. You know, it might be a little late for that, you want to get treated as soon as possible.
And you're your own advocate.
At two, that's a big one, yeah. The more people you know that know about this, the better. You want to educate yourself, really, to protect yourself. Because right now, it is about personal protection. We don't really have, you know, anything.
Is anything being done to eliminate the ticks? Some kind of spray or something to eliminate the population, because it's out of control?
Right now, no. There is a bill that's in legislature that's hopefully going to come down, and that'll give us the opportunity to test and spray and control the ticks.
And that'll take five, ten, twenty?
I wish, I wish I had that answer for you.
I wish you did too. I'm staying out of the woods, I've been sick three times, I'm done.
I'm sorry.
And I've gone to the emergency room, and they don't test you for all the different, you know, so also hospitals and doctors need to be educated, and all the different diseases ticks can get.
And that's why a lot of people...
They test you for regular Lyme, and if you don't have that, they send you home.
They don't realize that you can be infected with more than one disease as well.
That's true. My children's pediatrician diagnosing. I had that, spotted fever. That's all. And if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't be here.
And you live in New...
Yes, I do.
Question for the vaccine.
So that's, there used to be a vaccine for Lyme disease. Apparently it was making people sick, so they pulled it off the shelves. So hopefully that'll be in the works again, you know, eventually.
There was a vaccine, and people that had the vaccine that worked out in the field, a couple of people did get sick.
Yeah.
And they sued the company, and they took it off the market. That's what happened. But those that had it and it worked, they still don't get sick.
What happened with the vaccine, because I was part of that way back when the vaccine was around, because they had a series of shots, they pulled it off the market, because what they found out through research is that with some people, it was causing like a Lyme virus. Okay? So that was the part, the big part of that vaccine. They are coming out with another one. It's about two, year or two away, supposed to be based on the immune system, but we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Fingers crossed.
Dogs have vaccines.
And dogs also get Lyme disease too, right? There's testing for them, there's treatment for them, you know? We're not alone in this.
I had a comment about killing ticks. The real big problem is field mice, because the reservoir, the container for this bacteria are field mice.
White-footed mouse, right?
The more field mice you have, the higher the incidence of ticks becoming infected, because that's where the nymphs go to feed. They feed on small animals, especially the way the field mice. So if you start killing mice, you may be able to make a dent in it, but it's just not intense.
All good conversation, for sure. Any other questions or...
How long is it when they bite? How long? If they bite, I take it out right away?
So that was one of the things I had, so as per the CDC rates, thirty-six, forty-eight hours, but some diseases can, you can keep it in ten minutes, you can get the... Some of them are so small, right? The nymphs are the size of a poppy seed, so you couldn't even see them on you.
One more quick suggestion, if you go, this happened, I gave a lot of brochures to Wendy's Bob's Shop, I don't, not advertising, but what happens is the kids come in for summertime, you get a buzz cut, and that tick, they found a few ticks right in the center of the head. With women, there was one lady, because I run the hotline, one lady had a tick there. She actually had the bullseye, but with the hair, you could never see the bullseye. So she had it like here, and then she went on for months and months and months, because she had on the bullseye. So, you know, the hair and the ears is a real good place to be careful.
Rob?
Natural tick control, kind of goes to the other organs you're going to talk about in the 2017, chickens and guinea hens and everything, they love ticks and...
Yeah, they do.
My husband was bitten by a deer tick. He got a rash, but in the beginning, he had no bullseye whatsoever. Went to a dermatologist, the dermatologist didn't recognize the rash as Lyme disease. And he later started to get a weird-looking bullseye, but the whole big rash didn't disappear. And I had to tell the dermatologist it was Lyme disease.
Well, that goes along with the whole, you know, sending the info out, even to the healthcare providers, right? Increased recognition, and what to look for, symptoms, diseases.
If the doctor only orders Lyme disease, that's all the lab tests for. And they have to test the whole panel, because I was tested, and I have anaplasmosis, Bartonella, and Lyme disease. So I just spent a month on antibiotics. And Bartonella isn't affected by doxit greatly, it's a different antibiotic for that. So I'm still not going to go through that.
I'm sorry.
Kayla, if New Jersey has a law that if any child in school has Lyme disease, that all of the teachers and staff need to go to Lyme disease training?
Yeah, I just saw that, yeah.
And so is there anybody in the public health that goes and checks up at the schools to see if that's going on?
I'm not aware of that at this time, but I think that was something that was just recently passed. You know, I don't know, I would really have to get back to you on that one.
Definitely sounds like some questions too, perhaps for the freeholders and working with the Sussex County Health Department, particularly on that specific piece of legislation, right? Yes, last one?
Now, is, when you get tested, I've heard so many different things, but the Lyme disease tests, is it true that they're not very accurate?
It's hard to say to answer that question. You know, some people will say it's very accurate, you know, some research shows it is accurate. There's some new tests that are coming out. I hope Google approved the accuracy.
Why aren't doctors willing to like go, because I feel like there's Lyme specialists, and so they do this whole big strand, like why, why would my family doctor not be able to do the same thing?
I think it comes back to what someone said about being your own best advocate, right?
Exactly.
And, you know, really paying attention to what's going on in terms of symptoms and expressing those concerns, and probably requesting, right? Someone else said, or a couple of people said, that, you know, they were tested for Lyme's and not anything else. But with this type of education, and the more, I think, that people know, and the more questions that people can ask to advocate on behalf of themselves, I think would be helpful in a doctor's office to, you know, request those other, those other tests. So Kayla, I certainly want to thank you for coming in and doing the presentation, certainly everyone from the Tick Squad and everyone else that came and asked questions. You know, what a good opportunity to kind of just disseminate some information. I know that there are other municipalities that are discussing the topic as well, so any final thoughts or comments, questions for Kayla before she heads? Mr. Malone?
No, 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 I was pointing to you.
One of the first screenshots we had, you commented on is how you get it, or, okay, how does the tick get it? And I think it said by biting an infected animal.
The tick, yes. Yeah, like we were talking about the white-footed mouse. Yeah, that's a big one.
Alright, the infected animal. How does the infected animal get it?
What, what do you mean?
Had the mouse get it.
From the tick?
Some other animal.
But had the tiger or something get it.
The tick bites get the disease.
Well, did the tick got it from the mouse? Where did the mouse get it?
Right, where did it originally come from?
It could just host the disease in its body.
The tick bites some...
It doesn't have to get it from a bite, it could just host the disease. Because it's genetically prone to host the disease.
Some animals are affected by it too, and some are not, you know? So some...
Okay, so those other animals, if your cat or dog gets bitten by a tick, does that get transferred?
No, not to my knowledge. Maybe you guys could say it better.
What's that? What's that? I didn't hear the question.
I mean, I know that dogs and humans and cats exhibit symptoms.
Can it be dashed through, is that what he said?
If the tick is going to bite you...
Passing it on.
Part of the tick feeding process is to expel, the only place it can expel the pathogens or the food that it eats is through its mouth. So it intakes through its mouth and it pushes out through its mouth.
You're talking about the tick?
About the tick, so the tick is...
I'm asking about that tick has bitten you, me?
Right.
Dog, cat?
He goes kisses his wife, or if the dog kisses you and then has a...
So when the tick eats and it pulls in pathogens, it has that pathogen to its stomach. Now, if it goes, it molts, it goes into its next life stage, that tick is carrying that pathogen. Now it goes and it feeds on another animal, it can push that pathogen into that animal. So now it's infecting other animals.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. That's my whole point.
Yeah.
The other animals, now, when they bite you, or me, or anybody.
Or like you.
Can they pass it on?
I have Lyme, and I kiss my husband.
Well, there's a controversy that goes on, transferring pathogens through sex and through kissing, and they still haven't confirmed that. I can give you an example of my daughter. My daughter had my grandchildren. She passed three co-infections onto the kids through birth. And now they're all fighting, now that they've gone through puberty, they're all fighting the diseases. And my daughter had to quit her job. So it's, it's a tough disease, and once you get it, they're going to...
Yeah, it's a controversial question. It's communicable. Say that again? It's communicable.
It could possibly...
That's right now, they're...
It's still up in the air.
Still up in the air. They're still looking at it. Okay. They're not sure, so can't come out and say it is, it isn't. Okay? It's bad enough the way it is for a person.
And to answer your question about the mice, seventy to ninety percent of the mice have this Lyme disease pathogen naturally in their body. And it doesn't kill the mice, because they have a symbiotic relationship with the bacteria, which is interesting.
Okay, so I'm going to, yes, thank you very much, Kayla. So I'm going to, I'm going to close that portion, and Kayla, you don't have to stay around, since we did a question and answer for you there, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
All right, we're going to move on to council and manager reports. So as I mentioned before, I wanted to congratulate Chief Richards on his recent award from Pari and the Newton Police Department and the relationship with the Center for Prevention and Counseling. I also want to congratulate our own counsel, Attorney Ursula Leo. Congratulations on becoming president of the Sussex County Bar Association, so good luck to you on your term. Tom will probably expand on this later, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that the townwide garage sale is coming up the weekend of August 2nd through the 4th. And while August seems like it's kind of far away, it's not really, and applications are in the clerk's office and have to be completed by July 26th. So I know that there will be a map prepared and some promotion. There's already been some promotion in our newspapers of record, but the townwide garage sale is going to be the first weekend in August. We also have just started promoting something new that's going to be happening this fall. The Town of Newton Recreation Department has put out a little social media about this, but we're going to be talking more about this as we approach the time. But in recognition and in honor of Veterans Day, the Town of Newton this year is going to be sponsoring the Flags of Honor program, and this is going to be a display of flags on the lawn in the Town of Newton, right in front of the municipal building, I should say. And the American flags are going to be, will recognize and show honor to veterans who have dedicated themselves to the protection of our freedom, and flags will be on display throughout the month of November. This is not a fundraising initiative for the Town of Newton, rather this is the ability for people to adopt a flag and dedicate the flag in honor or in memory of a special veteran. The flags are going to be thirty dollars in all donations, all the monies raised are going to benefit Community Hope's Hope for Veterans program. We are going to have a ceremony on Saturday, November 9th, at 11:00 a.m. on the front lawn of the municipal building. I'm hoping that there are hundreds and hundreds of flags. We have a lot of history of individuals that have lived in Sussex County, certainly in the Town of Newton, that have served in our armed forces, either are currently serving, formally serving, and certainly Councilwoman Diglio could speak to the honor and the beauty of our Memorial Day services, et cetera, and I think that this is going to be a special edition in November. I'm really happy that we're going to be having this, this recognition. If you are going to participate, the deadline is October 31st. So information can be found on the town's social media, on our website, and Tom may also have some more information about, if that's through the clerk's office, et cetera, during his portion. Did want to remind everyone, as Tracy Poparella did as well, that we do have bus service running on a daily basis to the Hackettstown Pool, and signups are online. That started on July 1st. And I think that's all I have for right now. Deputy Mayor Flynn?
Nothing for me at this time.
Councilwoman Diglio?
Yes. On June 27, 2019, Kimberly Williams and myself attended the 15th Annual Awards Luncheon sponsored by the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership and Corp. While the town was nominated for the municipal award, we unfortunately did not receive it. But I am proud to announce that CWF and Corp., owned by John Quezalade, did receive the Business Investment Award. Alex Cable, President of Thor Labs, received the Distinctive Leadership Award, and Sussex County Community College received the Training and Workforce Development Award. My thanks to all three for their contributions to our town, because I am sure you recognize many of, you know, their names and what they have done for this town so far, and will continue to do for quite some time.
Anything else, Councilwoman Diglio?
Only that I've already purchased my flag today, in honor of my brother who passed away. He was a Vietnam veteran and died from his exposure to Agent Orange. So I bought his flag today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlaffler's not here, Councilwoman Dixon?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Mr. Russo?
First item on social media, we're promoting the Top Ten Reasons contest, why someone should visit the Town of Newton. That's on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. You have until noon on July 11th to submit your top ten list, so please do so. Second item, we do have... Second item, we do have a rec schedule of different events that's being promoted on social media. Michelle's been working diligently on that. Zumba classes, we have a trip to the Bronx Zoo, we have book workshop, we got Ice Cream Social, teen yoga, Picasso in the Park, we have a trip to Medieval Times, we're working on Giants-Jets preseason, family fun and movie night at Memory Park, so a lot of different activities. Some are at Memory Park, some are at Firehouse One, some are at Merriam-Abv Schools, so check out social media for the rec summer schedule. This Saturday, July 13th, we kick off the Town of Newton Thor Labs Summer Concert Series at the College. It's free, it's from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. First act is the Andrea Nyes Band, which is very well-known and very good. Check her out on YouTube. So that's this Saturday, July 13th at the College, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. She does three forty-five minute sets, so it'll be a nice, nice long concert and there's no charge. I want to congratulate John Quezalate. I know you talked about the EDP, but he was recognized by Congressman Gottheimer in the Fourth Hometown Hero Awards today. So congratulations to John. John is doing a lot of beautification and revitalization here in town, especially in the downtown with the Style Shop Building that came out great, and his pending Bula's application before the planning board next week. So congratulations to John and appreciate all that he does for the town, so kudos to him for being a hometown hero. Also, coming up in July, July 26th, Memory Park, 8:00 p.m., A Dog's Way Home will be first movie for us for the movie nights this summer, so please mark your calendar down. Friday, July 26th, Memory Park, 8:00 p.m., Dog's Way Home. They're taking donations of canned dog food for the food pantry, because the food pantry does provide dog food for families that need assistance with items for their pets, so please assist. As the mayor mentioned, we have the sidewalk sale and garage sale, so it's the garage sale through Lorraine's office, but we're encouraging businesses on Spring Street to participate that weekend with their sidewalk sale that was very successful last year, so that will be a lot of shopping for people in here in Newton, August 2nd through August 4th. As the mayor mentioned, I, I was proud to set up the Flags of Honor. It's actually something that my town in Burnards Township has done for many years. I have extra copies of the flyers, so if you can take them, we'll just pass it down. But yeah, it's something we've done in Burnards for several years. I participated when I was on the township committee, so we're looking forward to, like the mayor said, having lots of flags on municipal property. People that do the thirty dollar contribution to Community Hope also get a lapel pin that'll say Town of Newton Flags of Honor. The mayor will be speaking at the event. We're also inviting congressmen, state senator, and other dignitaries, as well as representatives from Community Hope, so that's November 9th, 11:00 a.m., so very happy to do that. And also, in the fall, we're going to start promoting it now, but in the fall, a little bit heavier, social media influencers from the high school and the college. We want to start getting the high school students and the college students, so I came up with a program to get participation from the students to be social media influencers, because they are an untapped resource for us to pull people into the businesses and activities in the town. So we're going to start promoting that, and then we'll push that heavy in the fall when school's back in session. And those are the eight items. And Tracy, I have a meeting this Friday with Suburban to get a pool update. I'm looking to cancel the July 22nd council meeting if the council's okay with that, so I'll probably have an update at that August meeting. So that'll be a brief update that I'll provide at that point, and at that point, I think the report should be pretty much ready to go, but then our next council meeting's not till September 11th, and that's when they'll do the full-blown PowerPoint, test results, recommendations, cost estimates, like I want everything wrapped up for that meeting so that if, you know, if it's simply, you know, the plaster job that we thought it might be and there's a recommendation, then we can start putting the bits backs together and get it out of the gate quickly. So I'll have an update at the first meeting in August for, on the pool. That's it.
I just wanted to ask a question on the movies in the park. Is there somewhere I can email out that's scheduled to like family members? I'm on the website now.
Yeah, I can get you the flyers.
Okay.
I'll get you the flyers.
Are they on the website, though?
Well, through social media, everything's being promoted.
Through social media?
But yeah, I can get you the flyers. I'll send it to-
Okay. Thank you.
Any other reports at this time? Okay, let's move on to ordinances. We have Introduction of Ordinance 2019-7 tonight. This is an ordinance revising Article 1 of Chapter 57, Animals, and Chapter 320, Zoning of the Code of the Town of Newton Regarding Animals. So we've been talking about this ordinance for a number of meetings. Tonight is introduction, and then at our next meeting, we'll have open public hearings, et cetera. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I will make a motion to introduce Ordinance 2019-7.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Dixon to introduce Ordinance 2019-7. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes.
And the public hearing is August 5th, Mayor.
Thank you. We have no old business tonight. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Tom, can you just go through them? There aren't that many, but then I believe Councilwoman Dixon will be recusing from one of the checks.
Yeah, we have a resolution to approve Steve Benson's sick vacation leave payout based on the contract. We have a cancellation of appropriation balance is 157. We have a grant application for Holstead Street and Madison Street Project, Section Two. We have the tax collector submitted information for the electronic tax sale. We have the right-of-way for utilization for Planet Networks Inc. for fiber optic cabling, which is a great project, and then we have bills and vouchers for payment. Matt's going to recuse from one particular check, and then a separate off-consent Chamber of Commerce, social affair permit for Taste of-
Which Councilwoman Diglio will also be recusing. Councilwoman Dixon, that check number?
Yeah, it's 41797.
Lorraine, you have that, 41797. Do want to make mention Resolution 161-2019. We do have Rob Boyle here from Planet Networks, so thank you for your input at the last meeting, and as you'll see in all the materials, movement on, on that particular resolution. Again, the Town of Newton being one of the first municipalities to pass the resolution in support of the fiber optic cabling and for use of that cabling in our right-of-way, so thank you for your partnership on that and expansion of those services to our residents and businesses. Any other resolutions that need to be pulled for further discussion or questions, comments? All right, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I will make a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion on the consent agenda by Councilwoman Diglio, a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call, vote please.
Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes, but I recuse from the application for the Greater New Chamber of Commerce.
And we'll do that separately, I think, yeah.
I'm going to do that separate, okay.
So you're okay?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, and you have Councilwoman Dixon's-
Check number?
Yep, 41797. All right, so we'll move on to that application. This is an application for a special permit for social affairs from the Greater New Chamber of Commerce located at 145 Spring Street in Newton to be held on Monday, September 9th, 2019, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. with a raid date of September 10th, 2019. This is for the Taste of Newton, I believe. All right, so I need a motion to approve this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to approve the application for the Greater New Chamber of Commerce from Councilwoman Dixon and a second by Deputy Mayor Flynn. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
I recuse from approval of the application.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor LaFois?
Yes, thank you. All right, we don't have any other discussion items scheduled, but Mr. Russo, we want to talk about that July meeting.
I will do that under council manager comment.
Okay. Any other discussions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will reopen the meeting to the public. Anyone that wishes to make a comment, statement, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Robert Boyle from Planet Networks. We're at Four Park Place here in Newton, and I just want to say thank you for your cooperation in approving our resolution. Thank you.
And happy belated birthday, I think it was this week, right?
It's the 11th, actually, so a couple days, so thank you.
Happy birthday, yeah. Thank you again. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and then we'll move to council manager comments. And Tom, I just wanted to echo also, congratulations to Sergeant Tom Tostie. He's been with the force for a very long time. My own children went through the program when he was a DARE officer, which is when I first met him, and I know he's well-respected and always receives a warm welcome when he goes to the schools. I was with him not too long ago at Newton High School, and a lot of the students interact with him in the hallways, and I think he's going to be a great addition in his new role as sergeant. Did also want to extend our congratulations to John Quezalate for being recognized this morning by Congressman Gottheimer in his local Heroes Awards that was in Bergen County earlier this morning. You know, we have the opportunity as a town and as a council and as a community to recognize individuals to get that spotlight under Congressman Gottheimer. We appreciate that opportunity. And if you recall, Isabel Costello was the one who received the honor last time. And, you know, if Isabel, if Isabel was here, she would tell you that she's gotten a lot of recognition and support and expansion in her weekend bag collection program, you know, and a lot of that started kind of here, and she's been out in the community expanding that. So thanks for submitting that application or nomination for, for John. If he was here, he'd have a big smile on his face and be happy about that as well.
See him next Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll see him next Wednesday. And also the recognition that he got from the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership. And again, I think, just to expand on that for a second, Sandy, there were, I think we discussed this in the last meeting, there were more than ten or twelve or so Newton businesses or residences or portions of the government, governing entities that were nominated by the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership. And I think if you don't read about that in the paper, or if you don't see it, or if you're not seeing the promotion of that, a lot of those kind of developments and projects kind of fly under the radar. And so we like to talk about them because a lot of people don't necessarily see the changes that are happening on Spring Street, in the Business District, on the Spine, and any of the six redevelopment projects that we have, but there is, there are things in motion, and things are constantly in motion. And for those of you that attend the planning board meetings, you know, you're, you're hearing about those applications. I know Mr. Malone comes to many of those meetings, but there is definitely a lot going on in the Town of Newton, so it's great that the county economic development partnership is also recognizing those efforts as well. Other council, other council comments before we move on to the July meeting?
Can I just echo the same sentiments and thoughts about Tom Tostie and his promotion? He's a, if there's nobody else in the department at this current time that I felt would be recognized for a leadership position that would, you know, rise to the occasion. You know, he's shown, he's shown a lot of responsibility over the years. He's, you know, he's well-respected by members of the community, the department, people on the council. He's well-deserving of a promotion, and I feel confident he'll fill that role very nicely.
Yeah, you know, I mean, the entire department does a good job at community policing-
Yeah.
-is what they call it, but he specifically and individually has been doing community policing as part of his entire career, right?
Before community policing was a thing.
Was a thing, right, yeah, for sure.
When I go to another community, because I spend a lot of time outside of Sussex County for my, for my career, and I, and I mention Newton, and I talk about Newton and the great things going on in the town and the police department, and people are like, what's, you know, what's so great about the police department? They don't understand what a community police department does and how it like interacts with the community and all these different actions and, and events and affiliations with the school, and it really, it really works in like a symbiotic relationship, so it's nice to see that. There's others out there, and, you know, you know when you live in a community that has a community police department.
For sure. Anything else?
The only other comment, Maureen, when it comes to ticks, there are treatments that you can put down on your lawn?
I have done that this year.
Okay.
I'm homebound, I don't go anywhere. I like to hike, I like to be out in nature, and until they come up with something to take care of that out in the woods, I'm, I'm done. I was very sick last fall. Yeah.
Anything else, Councilwoman? Nope. Councilwoman Dixon? All right, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, just a reminder about planning board next Wednesday. We'll have the application for the new Bula's building with the commercial space and the twenty-six luxury apartments, and be discussing the master plan recommendations, so members of the public are interested, that would be the meeting to go to, and yeah.
That's a good conversation.
Yeah. And looking to cancel the July 22nd meeting, I'll be off that day, and we don't have anything for the agenda for discussion or executive, so it's up to the council.
So this is that weird kind of transition year, right? Because formerly we were reorganizing on July 1st and wouldn't have that second meeting, so it's been a number of years that we haven't had that second council meeting in the month of July. So this is really, I mean, at the council's pleasure, Dawn, what I did ask Tom the other day was if there was anything from a financial perspective in terms of approving bills and vouchers, payments, things like that, that needed to be done or could be, could wait until the first August meeting?
Well, we only have, we only have one August meeting, right?
Yeah, August 5th.
So if you're not, if you're, I've, if you have, if you're going to take off, and I, this is just my opinion, that I have no problem when you're here at every council meeting, you no longer have a deputy manager to delegate to, but my opinion is that it looks better that we have more consistent meetings, to have two months with one meeting, even if the meeting is fifteen minutes long and there's just council discussion, which sometimes can just be constructive in its own sense, that, that's just my opinion. And I am totally comfortable with Tom not being here for that, and somebody sitting instead.
It would be Chief Richards, do you know his-
No, I wouldn't have anybody.
Oh, nobody?
Yeah, I wouldn't. I'm not designating an active manager.
Well, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter either way.
I tend to agree, only because our next meeting will be until after September 9th, it'll be more like the 11th, and that's quite a span between the 5th and the 11th.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a, that's a long span, so at least if we have anything we want to discuss, public wants to come and-
We can have a fifteen-minute meeting.
Brief meeting, but-
I think we should adjourn, but I don't have a corner, but.
Okay.
Thank you. And then we have Resolution 163 to go to executive?
Yes, so we do have an executive session items tonight. This is Resolution 163-2019. This is a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-12. This is regarding contract negotiations regarding the Sussex County Bridge Q06 Bridge Project. So we will ask the audience to please step out. You're welcome to stay in the lobby until after the executive, which we'll come back